Good evening. I am Maureen Bellino, District Clerk for the Putnam Valley Central School District, and I welcome you to our reorganizational and business meeting. Would you please rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first order of business tonight is to minister the oath of office to our newly-elected trustees. Ms. Janine Ruffo and Ms. Jeanette Yatter will both be sworn in for a three-year term. Ms. Ruffo, would you please stand, recite, and sign your oath of office?
I, Janine Ruffo, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Trustee of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations. You are now officially reelected as a member of the Board of Education. Ms. Yatter, would you please stand and recite your oath of office, which is from Article 13-1 of the New York State Constitution?
I, Jeanette Yatter, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Trustee, Board of Education, according to the best of my abilities.
Thank you. Congratulations. You are now officially elected as a member of the Board of Education. The next order of business tonight is to elect a president of the Board of Education. Do we have any nominations?
I resolve to nominate Janine Ruffo as president of the Putnam Valley Board of Education.
Ms. Ruffo, would you accept that nomination?
I will.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations for president? Then we ask for a vote. All those in favor of Janine Ruffo as president of the Board of Education?
Aye.
Nay? Passes unanimously. Ms. Ruffo?
Change seats. Thank you, Mrs. Bellino.
You're welcome. So when you get a chance, sign this before you leave.
This is yours.
Okay.
Hers.
And I'll take that one. And then you'll call for the vice president.
That's me.
I'll take my name. I'll get Janine's.
Oh, thank you, Mrs. Bellino. And take your beautiful blue pen.
Thank you so much.
They're so delightful. Hi, Dr. Luff.
How are you?
This is nice. Okay, this is me. All right.
Except she didn't take the oath yet.
Oh, I'm not president. All right, do I really have to?
You really just stand up and do it again.
Okay. I, Janine Ruffo, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability. Thank you. Okay, so our first order of business is to get someone to do all the work I want to delegate them to, is to be the vice president of the Board of Education. Do I have any nominations at this time?
Resolve to nominate Joe Farrow as vice president of the Putnam Valley Central School District Board of Education.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any other nominations? Mr. Farrow, do you accept this nomination?
Sure.
Okay. So, Mr. Farrow, I'd like you to...
No.
No? Oh, I forgot that part. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Now, Mr. Farrow, will you please recite the oath?
I, Joseph Farrow, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States... Sorry, Constitution of the United States and Constitution of the State of New York, that I faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Mr. Farrow. Once again, someone else to delegate to. We are another... The next order of business is to give the oath of office for our new superintendent, Dr. Jeremy Luff. This is not a resolution. Dr. Luff just...
No, he just has to do it.
No, we already did that.
We did that. Yes, go ahead.
I, Dr. Jeremy Luff, solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools of the Putnam Valley Central School District effective July 1st, 2019, according to the best of my ability.
We all in favor of that back in April or May.
Right.
Hopefully, it's unanimous on that.
You can put it unanimous on that. I'll sign this one. She elected. Okay. Well... The next item on the agenda is opening it up to public comment on any of the existing agenda items. And just as we get started, anything from the board at this time? Then let's go right into new business. And we go in this order, just for our new trustee. So, Mr. Farrow, will you please start us off?
Resolve and recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to appoint Thomas Chickory as the elementary school assistant principal in the tenure area of elementary school assistant principal to serve a four-year probationary appointment effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2023, at the annual salary of $130,000. Mr. Chickory holds the following N.W.A. New York State certifications: Initial School Building Leader K-12, Professional Certification of Physical Education K-12, and Health Education K-12.
I second.
Questions or comments?
Shall I speak a little bit... Oh, that's loud, Dan. Let's speak a little bit about the process. So, Mr. Chickory certainly rose to the top throughout the process, although the process began with almost 200 applicants that applied for the position. I know 20 individuals were screened. Good, Dan? Okay. So, 20 individuals came in for in-person screenings, and then a smaller group moved forward for a large committee interview, and then finally, finally, and then a smaller group moved forward for a presentation, and then our finalist, Mr. Chickory, met with the Board of Education as well after the last board meeting. So, Tom impressed throughout the process. He certainly showed that he did a tremendous amount of research on Putnam Valley, knew a lot about the district, and I think his personality really won people over. People were really excited to work with him, and I'm excited to work alongside him. So, congratulations to Tom, his wife, and his adorable little daughter in the back of the room.
All in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor, aye. See, I remember that. You read it now. She gets to come to work once a week. Congratulations. Welcome. Oh, she's clapping. I wish you could all put her on camera, Dan. Mrs. Yatter, will you read us number two?
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Melissa Estrella to a four-year probationary term as a CSC chairperson commencing on September 1st, 2019, and terminating on August 31st, 2023 in the tenure area of Special Education of the PPS Department on step 15 of the PVFT's salary schedule. Ms. Estrella holds School Board Leader Initial Certification... I put my glasses on. And Professional Certifications in Students with Disabilities 1 through 6, Childhood Education 1 through 6, and Early Childhood Education 4 through 2. Ms. Estrella is also approved for up to 20 days of work at her contractual rate of pay prior to official start date during July and August.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, I'll just talk a little bit about Melissa. I'm sorry she couldn't be here. She happens to be away this week. We actually went through three rounds of interviews and just were really sticking to our guns, that we wanted the best candidate for the position, somebody that would be able to really lead in a teacher leadership position, the Special Education Department. So, we feel like we really found a great candidate. She has a lot of experience, recently moved up here to Putnam. She actually was one of the candidates for the AP position, and we sort of scooped her up and asked her if she'd be interested in this, and it was just, we think, a great match. So, we're excited to have her. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank publicly Sue O'Connell for taking that position for the year right when Ms. Farrow left.
Exactly.
So, it made for a really nice transition.
And she's been truly so helpful, Ms. O'Connell, and I'm glad for her that she's going back to her position, and I know she'll enjoy it.
Ms. O'Connell's not disappeared. She's gone back to her elementary school principal. I mean, not principal, no secrets, psychology.
Psychology position.
Great for this.
Number three. Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Maxine Warden to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing on September 1st, 2019, and terminating on August 31st, 2023 in the Teaching Assistant tenure area on step 2 of the CSEA salary schedule and in accordance with PVCSD Policy Number 9250. Ms. Warden holds Teaching Assistant Level 1 certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? I just want to say that I know if you were paying attention at the retirements, we had six TAs at the middle school retire, and they were really the backbone of the school. So, I'm delighted Ms. Warden was a monitor. I'm delighted that we're bringing in skilled people to help make that transition because those retiring people will absolutely be missed. All in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Resolved and recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to appoint Elizabeth Tron to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing on September 1st, 2019, and terminating on August 31st, 2023 in the Teaching Assistant tenure area on step 2 of the CSEA salary schedule and in accordance with the Putnam Valley Central School District Policy Number 9250. Ms. Tron holds Teaching Assistant Level 1 certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number five, Mr. Farrow.
Resolved and recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to appoint Andrew Celestry to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing on September 1st, 2019, and terminating on August 31st, 2023 in the Teaching Assistant tenure area on step 1 of the CSEA salary schedule in accordance with Putnam Valley Central School District Policy Number 9250. Mr. Celestry holds Teaching Assistant Level 1 certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number six, Mrs. Yatter.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Nicholas Eva-Sai to a probationary appointment as groundskeeper custodial worker effective July 3rd, 2019, with a minimum probationary period of eight weeks, August 28th, 2019, and a maximum of 52 weeks, July 2nd, 2020, at the Operations Department on step 1 of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Suzanne Ittri to a probationary appointment of school monitor effective September 1st, 2019, with a minimum probationary period of eight weeks, October 27th, 2019, and a maximum of 52 weeks, August 31st, 2020, at the middle school on step 1 of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number eight.
Resolved and recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Jessica Knuth...
Knuth.
...to a one-year leave replacement position as a teacher at the elementary school effective September 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education on step 1 MA of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Knuth holds Childhood Education 1 through 6 certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to number one of the consent agenda. Ms. Yatter, would you read it for us?
Resolved or approved?
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm next.
Oh, you're next.
But that's okay.
Mr. Farrow, will you...
Doesn't really...
Here, I'm trying to be so organized and I blow it.
I understand. I think you're just trying to give...
Help Jeanette out a little?
Yeah. And give guys some breathing room for the next announcement. Resolved to approve consent agenda for personnel and other appointments as per items 2 through 35 as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
As Mr. Farrow read, we're appointing a whole bunch of personnel and other appointments. One of the first ones is Ms. Bellino, again, is our district clerk. We're appointing Alex Groffman as our computer specialist. It will now become a full-year position instead of a 10-month position. We're approving the assistant superintendent, the superintendent, Dr. Luff, to approve staff members who go to conferences, to apply for grants and aid, to recommend budget transfers. We're appointing, and I won't give all the names now, assistant treasurers, purchasing agents, tax collectors, assistant tax collectors, district access officers, E.S.S.A. coordinators, Title VI coordinators, Title VII, IX coordinators. We're appointing a data protection officer, Michael Lee. We're appointing an emergency safety coordinator who's going to be checking on a lot of things, including asbestos. We're approving the district treasurer and assistant purchasing agents. We're approving our DASA coordinator. We're approving our claims auditors, our school medical officers. We're rehiring Shaw, Pearson, May, and Lambert for legal services. We're approving O'Connor-Davies as our internal auditors and a cune for external. We're appointing the board of registration, who will take care of the votings. We're appointing a team to review and approve REDUCE and free lunch programs for our students. We're appointing our 504 team. They're the ones who handle students with special needs. We're appointing staff members who will be chaperoning at various school events. We're appointing the young man who's standing out there taking this all down and showing it to the public, our videographer.
Hi, Dan.
We're appointing our CSE and CPSC chairpeople. We're appointing the pupils with special services, the testing team that will be working this summer for students that have to take tests due to their status. We're appointing 10-month school counter employees, all the ones, the clerks and everyone else who works for only 10 months. We're appointing the kindergarten camp staff, those who will maintain a small camp that we run for the kindergarten students who are coming in in September so they orientate their staff. We're approving the transportation team to appoint the E.S.Y. program, and we're approving staff members who are conducting summer programs.
Nicely done, Mr. Guy. And all of that is on the agenda and available to the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I've lost track. We have another consent agenda.
It's K, item number one.
Okay, here we go.
And that would be Mrs. Yatter.
All right, thank you, Mr. Farrow. K, item... Yes, K, Consent Agenda Other Business. Mrs. Yatter, if you can read it for us?
Resolved to approve Consent Agenda Other Business, items 2 through 26, as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second. All questions or comments? Do you... Would you like somebody else to go through it, Mr. Farrow?
It's up to... If anyone else wants to do it.
Yeah, go. Just go. You're on a roll.
Sure, I'm on a roll. We're approving minutes from prior meeting. We're approving partners in safety to deliver the bus physicals and drug alcohol testing for our bus drivers. We're approving that Morgan Chase Key and Maipack banks and liquid, and co-op liquid assets will be our district banks. We're approving petty cash funds for all the buildings and administrators for $100. We're approving that Maureen will be allowed to open all bids. We're approving that the Journal News and the Putnam County News and Reporter are our official newspapers. That's where we'll put all our ads. We're approving the District, Putnam Valley Central School District, to be member, and this goes on for a long time, New York State School Boards Association, Westchester Putnam School Boards Association, Mid-Hudson School Council, the Putnam Valley Business Group, the National School Boards Association. It goes on and on, and I'll stop now. We're approving Dr. Luff as superintendent will be a member, that he can join the American Association of School Administrators, the Lower Hudson Council of School Superintendents, Lower Hudson Educational Coalition, New York State Council of School Superintendents, et cetera, et cetera. It goes on, and in the Putnam County, Westchester School Chiefs, and the Hudson Valley, and everything else. We're approving Children's Internet Protection Act, where we will protect our children as best we can when they use technology. We're approving VESID as our impartial hearing officers when necessary. We're approving the Board of Ed President and Vice President to appoint the impartial hearing officer. We're approving Shaw, Pearson, and Lambert to supply legal services when necessary. We're approving some CSEA, CPSC placements. We're approving an athletic placement process, which will ensure that if a middle school student is qualified, they can play varsity sports, et cetera. So, we're defining how people can play various sports. We're approving the school lunch prices, both the regular and REDUCE, and we're defining the criteria for people to have REDUCE lunch prices. We're approving our bond console. We're readopting all the policies that we have previously approved. We're approving the district plans for guidance, professional development, and special education. We're approving contracts with the Putnam Valley Sheriff's Department to supply our offices. We're approving parents, volunteer members for the CSE and CPSC committee. We're approving the fiscal advisors and marketing advisors, the fiscal advisory group to do that. We're approving a contract with Montorq to supply summer school transportation for students that have to be in school during the summer. We're approving the University of Albany to supply educational services, reviewing programs, et cetera. We're accepting a generous donation and match from IBM from Mrs. Denalibo to be used for the John Klinegris Memorial Scholarship Fund. We are approving PAS to supply driver's education to our students. And finally, we're approving Lakewood Central District to supply services for two students with special needs.
All in favor?
Aye.
Earned his pay today.
Very, very nicely done, Mr. Cohen. And again, this is all available for more detail on the website.
Just for those in the audience and at home, if you go to the Putnam Valley website, Putnam Valley Central School District, go on the Board of Education, go to agendas, you click on the agenda, this will all come up. This will all come up. And if you... The meetings are online also, but you can actually get it.
And if you send an email to Guy, he'll read it to you again.
That won't happen.
Ooh, that would be...
I will also announce that the vice president of the Board of Education is getting a 20% raise this year, and the president is not.
Yeah, I actually agreed to do it for half the pay. And for those of us, we are joking. This is a volunteer position, everybody who is on the Board of Education, so. Is... I'm just going to open it up for public comment.
I just... Because we haven't been together since graduation?
Yes.
Going to fourth grade, moving up, eighth grade graduation, high school graduation, really shows, I don't know, how wonderful our... First of all, how wonderful our kids are, how enthusiastic they are, all the things that they're involved in, and how they grow from really little, little, you know, up until, you know, adults. It really is, was, an incredible thing to see, and I thoroughly enjoyed being at each one of those.
I actually, the night of the Putnam Valley graduation, I went to three high school graduations in 24 hours. I went to my nieces at 3 o'clock. I went here at 7:00, and my nephews at 2:00. Not just saying it because it's Putnam Valley. There was no competition by the... Just the warmth, the professionalism, just our graduation had something special. It really, really did. So, thank you for bringing that up. And I want to officially, once again, welcome Dr. Luff to the fun position of superintendent of schools. Hope you've started having fun already?
We have. We've been having a ball.
Excellent. Is there anything else?
Yeah, I got stuff.
Oh, good.
Since it's our first of the year, and there's a lot on the plate to come by, and I know we're going to get to a retreat, planning retreat coming up, but I want to make sure, in case I forget, to bring these up as things for us to discuss retreat. Obviously, there are some priorities, some priorities. One of them is going to be a transportation bid for next year. Obviously, that's got to be a big priority, figuring out what's going to happen for next year, and then reorganizing our budget to allow for that new bid to come to form. And at some point, probably, I guess, imagine the August meeting, or unless we want to wait till September, usually, and then it didn't happen this year, we get a presentation on what some work is going to happen before it happens, but we didn't get one this year. So, it'll be good to see what kind of some work is going to happen outside of the Capitol. Stuff just, you know, are they going to be blacktopping driveways this year, or relining, or all those things?
From a facilities standpoint, you're asking, not necessarily a curriculum.
No, I'm talking about facilities.
Last year, we were moving into the early start time, and that was a big agenda of the summer, so.
Right, right, right.
Do you want some of the quick highlights? I can give them to you.
Sure.
Sure. So, I know that...
Surprise.
One of the items that the Buildings and Grounds Crew has already begun working on is the cross-country trail around this campus here. So, I know it was something that was originally... It was done by a community group, and unfortunately, it left our property line. So, I know that Dave and his guys have taken on the project and have already mapped out the course and are beginning to clear the pathway for the cross-country course in this building. At the elementary school, the windows, most of the windows in the building will be replaced. That's a big project that we were unable to complete last summer because of the asbestos removal piece. So, that should begin next week, and we hope that project will be done by the very beginning of August. Those are two of the really big projects that are going on. There's other routine maintenance, HVAC systems, other stuff like that. But because we have such a large project coming up, we were trying to really minimize the work that we were doing in the buildings this year. So, the cross-country course is obviously something that will not be impacted by the construction, and the windows are something that we were waiting on from last year. Though the guys will, of course, be involved in other projects, but those are really two of the big ones that they're working on right now. Some of the other things we're looking at, we want to create sort of a more inviting entryway to the athletic fields and to what will be the head of the trail for the cross-country trail. So, that's something that we're actually working with the architects to get some design ideas. I don't know whether or not we'll get to it this year, but it's something that we're really, we're going to begin to explore this summer, and to whatever extent we're capable of, we'll do the work ourselves.
As a corollary, I want to make sure, because last year, we had, there were a ton of incidents with humidity in a bunch of different school districts, really messing up the start of school and causing tons of havoc. I want to make sure that we are monitoring all our buildings, that we have air conditioning on and dehumidifiers where we need them, and, you know, all that stuff. I want to make sure that that's top of mind. I know even when there's nobody going, nobody actually in the elementary school is a reason that air conditions are on in some of the windows. And, you know, I want the community to realize that when they are up there and they're playing at a field, whatever, and they're exercising on in a classroom, that there's not been a class in it for weeks, and you just don't... I want people to realize that there's actually a reason for some of that.
Exactly.
I think a nice piece of the elementary school is because of the new geothermal system runs such a large portion of that building, is you don't see air conditioners as much running in the windows because the geothermal is really cooling that building and removing much of the humidity that exists. So, some of the hallways still have air conditioners, and those could run, but a majority of the building is really cooled and dehumidified through the geothermal.
And I'll give you a little bit of an update on our extended school year program, which typically is held at the middle school and the elementary school, but because of some of the construction that's going on at the elementary school, we decided to hold our E.S.Y., our extended school year program, at the high school. And sort of, I heard what Barb was talking about, because here at the high school, our guidance councils are in for some of the summer, so I made them come... Not made them, I had them. I invited them down to visit classrooms of our youngest students. And, you know, of course, they're all saying, "What's their last name?" And "What's their last name?" So, they, you know, because they know that they'll get them as they get older. So, we relocated our program here at the high school, and I was a little worried about it, I have to tell you. Kudos to the custodial staff. I mean, everything was just moved here and done so smoothly and so well done that everything was prepared. Our teachers were in over the weekend and last week, setting up. And we have about 30 to 40 kids on any given day that are in attendance at our program, and it's just going so well. Ages kindergarten through ninth grade. Our ninth graders aren't so thrilled, and our attendance isn't great, our entering ninth graders, but we expect that every year. We make phone calls. We do as much bribing as we can to get them here. And then we'll do some regions prep work for students that need to, you know, sit for the regions again in August, so we're in the process of setting that up as well. So, we have a lot of activity going on over the summer. Our teachers, if anybody wants to stop by on Monday, I'm doing just a little private breakfast for the teachers and the teaching assistants who come in during the summer to work with some of our students who qualify for these types of programs. So, we're here until August 9th, and the programs are going smoothly. And I just really appreciate the teachers' dedication to their students and all of the staff and the high school faculty that is in and out. It really get to see our youngest students and... Really get to see our youngest students and take a look at them now, and are having so much fun, so appreciate it.
So there will be no students in the elementary school this summer? I guess not. And is staff allowed in? Like, how is this, what's the?
For the programs, the Kinder Camp and the bus run. At the end of the summer, in August, but we expect the work to be completed by then.
But office staff is in? And teachers can be in, not can be in?
Yeah, I mean, it's so localized, what they're doing. The work that they're doing is really removing caulk around windows, and the caulk has asbestos in it. I don't know the exact timeline, but I know that Dave has worked it out, that if they're working in their area, they can come over to the district office and bring their laptops and be able to do work there. But because the work is so isolated, it's not like they have to be out of the building for a month. It's just like when they remove the windows in the main office, they would come out for a day or two to come over to the district office. And we anticipate, again, all of that work, the asbestos work should be done really quickly, but even the window replacements shouldn't infringe on the Kinder Camp by the time that starts in August.
And if I can just jump in, the summer reading challenge will be running at the elementary school main office, starting next week.
And Mr. Cefaro, I forgot to welcome you to the table.
Thank you.
Officially.
Thank you.
So Janet, you want to just talk about the summer reading challenge, just in case there's anybody out there that missed.
Sure.
The hundred messages that you sent out?
So I'm very proud of the summer reading challenge. It's sponsored by the community, really. It's sponsored by local businesses that are here in Putnam Valley and organizations, our teachers' union, our CSEA, the Putnam Valley Education Foundation, try not to forget anyone. And basically, the students receive a reading log at the end of the school year, and they can come in and check in every week and get great prizes.
That's great.
So we're trying to encourage summer reading.
And we're also, we partnered, our extended school year program partnered with the library for a bunch of different activities, so we'll be doing trips to the local library and doing lots of fun activities, so just really trying to keep up those reading goals over the summer.
And parents, or adults, or older children, the Putnam Valley is doing a Putnam Valley Reads Into the Beautiful North.
Yes.
They posted their calendar, finally got the July calendar on the library. There are seven dates that they're meeting. One of them is here in the high school at 11 o'clock, I can't remember what day, but it's on the Putnam Valley Library calendar. You can pick any of those days to come in, and the book is really good, so I'm kind of right in the middle of it, but it's really good.
Just started it.
I'm like.
Just downloaded it today.
Haven't started yet. So I encourage the adults to set a good example and read a book, come and talk about it.
And as a proud member of two book clubs personally, I know I have been at the high school a few times, I'm the elementary school, I'm sorry, when kids have come in, and usually the clerical staff will say, oh, did you read that one? I like that one, and engage them in a conversation. So it isn't just bribery of read and you'll get a prize, it's engage, reading is a shared connection.
Absolutely.
So, and so another thing, and this might need some preparation prior to getting to retreats, and retreat is further later into the summer, I think one of the things that we should be looking at in a pretty concerted way is our graphic identity, I mean, consistency of graphic identity. Right, there are so many tigers out there, so many different logos. You know, I think one of the things that we should consider is, while we're not replacing kind of the standard letterhead situation, or maybe we are, I think those seals say a lot about who we are as opposed to a generic blue and white tiger. And I think we've got one for each building, we've got one for the district. I think they should be used on podiums, on top of the library, a nice big blank space, just to reaffirm some of the foundational goals, because they show up in there, it ties into the aspire idea. So I want to, you know, kind of put that, tee that up onto the table, to think about that as something consistent that says something about our message, because it also includes our mission statement. So I think it ties everything together. I would like us to consider kind of more of a consistent, when we do outreach, that doesn't look like 15 different things coming from 15 different places. So that's something I think we should at least consider and look at as part of the retreat, but I imagine it would take a little bit of teeing up prior to that to be able to gear up, to be ready for the beginning of the year.
Priority list is getting longer and longer. And our retreat is with the Board of Education and the administration?
Cabinet.
The cabinet, yes. And I think we had also talked about having a, since we do have a new board member, and Ms. Farmley, we didn't treat you like a new board member last year because you were a new old board member, is that the way the sentence works?
A new previous board member.
A new previous board member who is new again.
My ender young one.
You are a new, oh, right, you catch the old.
Getting old and new again.
So, sorry. So we were thinking that following the retreat with the administration, we'd like to retreat as a board, just for some really logistics, how we operate as a board. For example, people often will say, well, I wrote to the Board of Education, and you were the only one that responded. Our policy has generally been for the president to respond on behalf of, but let's look at that. We don't have to keep doing things the way we've been doing them for years and years. So after we meet, I'd like to, and Maureen, you would have to announce that as a public, I mean, as a, I guess, an executive session or a retreat.
It's just part of the retreat.
Part of the retreat process. So I just wanted to, since I don't know who I spoke to about that.
What's the time of ours, what's the time of the first one?
Like, three o'clock?
August 15th?
Three o'clock.
Like, three o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So we can just extend after that.
We could do that.
Because we should have at least one or two goals that we specifically wanted work on to improve the way the board functions.
Right, and it'd be good to see the pulse of what's going on before, and then we can collect after.
Right.
Okay. All right, if there's anything else from anyone, then I'd like a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Have a wonderful summer, everybody, and we will see you, actually not in September, in August.
In August.